Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
Aye.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
Uh, because there's no additions or changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Moved and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the meeting of October the 2nd.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 2nd, 2012. Uh, regular meeting is submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the October 2nd meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is a financial report. Wayne?
We began the month with $76,286.98. We took in receipts of $17,386.88 and made disbursements of $29,049.34, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $64,624.59.
I think a motion to approve the financial report is...
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as presented. Any discussion? Uh, just one item also included a year-to-date summary in your packet. It lists everything year-to-date.
Any items of interest on that, or...
Nothing that's really exciting, uh, but keeps you up to date on what's going on. So, last month we had the six-month report in your packet. This is the seventh-month report. Okay, we have a motion with support and no discussion. A call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Colson?
No, abstaining, motion carries. Okay. We have no correspondence. All the stuff you got in your packet for the FYI really wasn't the typical type of correspondence. Moving on to new business. Item A is the 2013 local road funding assistance program. We applied for the bridge on Lindsay Road and also a ditching project. And the bridge was approved, but the ditching project was not. In closing, your packet is the agreement they sent us that we need approval on so I can sign it and send it in. It will cost us $28,150 for our half of the bridge, which is what was originally applied for. Uh, the second part there, in case you're curious. Before, there is also an agreement for $4,500. If, for whatever reason, we sign this and send it in and then we fail to complete the project, they would want a bill or amount of money of $4,500 for their engineering. But if they go through and do the project, there's no charge. So... Any questions on any of this?
No, this, uh, this is basically, basically, you're going to be redecking this project.
No. Uh, and I didn't dig all that out, but we had it all at the time. They're going to remove the bridge, put in two culverts.
Okay, that's right.
Widen the road and also raise the road. Uh, this is on Lindsay near Laboon Road.
Right.
Uh, it's down to five ton right now and if 38 Starlings sit on it, it's gonna be, the road's gonna be closed.
That dimension is just in the school of us.
We need, we need to get it done.
When, when do they say they're going to start on? Next spring?
Didn't it say in there?
And raise the...
May the 1st would, would be basically the start of their year, so sometime next year. Because this money from the county, the matching money is for 2013, so it'll be next year.
Okay.
So, I guess that's as good as it gets. If you want to fix the bridge, we had two bids. One was to resurface it, that was over $70,000, and one was to replace the bridge with another bridge, and that was over $90,000. So...
This is the most...
This is the most economical, plus it's going to widen the road because it's very narrow there.
Yeah, remove the bridge.
Okay, so we would need a motion?
I'd make a motion, um, to approve, uh, the local road funding assistance for, um, Lindsay Road Bridge.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the work order agreement for the local road matching fund for the Lindsay Road Bridge in the amount of $28,150. Any discussion? I think it'd be good to have a roll call vote on this.
Okay, we will. Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Me, yes. Okay.
Okay, moving on. Item B. Uh, this comes about most years, and here it is again. Uh, November 12th is a holiday for Veterans Day, and because of that, the township would be closed, but the folks that work in the office would like to swap that day for the day before Thanksgiving.
Uh, so moved.
Support.
Moved and supported to swap holidays from November 12th to November 21st. Any discussion?
November 21st, that's Cooking Day, isn't it?
Yes, it is. That's Cooking Day.
No discussion, or call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is kind of just informational, but we, we talked this year about a autodiler, putting one in the township hall, and it would take care of temperature. And I put in here a couple extras. One would be for water. They would have a sensor for water. And the other one would be for smoke. Uh, it would also read electricity, but our current alarm system picks it up if the electricity goes out. Now, I have approximate costs. Mr. Baumgarten acquired one on eBay for $60, which is in excellent condition, and he said he would sell it to the township for that. That's why I put 60 to, a new one is $190. Uh, the three prices below are, if the 90 was water, correct?
Yeah.
And the 55 was a smoke? Well, one of it had smoke and one was smoke with what?
Well, one, one had battery backup and one was just, uh, you know, an AC.
Okay.
So, does it have sensors that detect smoke or water, or...
Yeah, they have sensors that you install and wire to this unit, and then if any of them are triggered, it calls whatever numbers you program into it. You could have two or three people programmed in.
Want me to film a little about it?
Yeah.
Sure, please do, Wayne.
It comes with a temperature sensor and a, uh, a power sensor built in. And then you can add, like, a water sensor, and you can add a smoke sensor, and you can add all different kinds of sensors to it. And I have been down in the church. I've had it down there for, I think it's going on 14 years. It saved us many a times if the sub pump don't work, that it catch it, like, right now before anything floods. And if the, I don't know if the furnace goes out, you can program it and what temperature you want it to dial out. And you also can program four phone numbers into it. You can have four people on call, you know, to acknowledge, uh, you know, the call, or whatever you want to do. It's, uh, you know, a very good system. They've been around for years. I've got one in my house too, because I'm not there all that much, and it's very helpful.
Yeah.
Does it come with a rodent sensor?
Wow, that's a good one.
Only if they chew the wire off to the water sensor.
Oh, I see.
I thought we were so part of the mice who didn't bother.
Yeah, they really don't. They don't.
Anyway, I didn't put it on here, but right now we're probably going to look at a programable thermostat for the office and see how that goes. But if we're going to be turning the heat down automatically, I would like to have, you know, a temperature sensor, and I'd also like to have a water sensor over the long weekend.
And you said smoke sensor, too?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so that'd call right, like, the fire department?
No, you plug in, you know, like, if Wayne will agree, we'll probably, because he was closest, we'll call him first. And then me, and then Patty or Colleen will be there before. And then you have to come down and see what's going on. But, you know, because we're not open, we're three days on the weekend. If you would have a water problem, it could be pretty substantial by Monday. So, uh, the amounts involved here, uh, probably do not trigger a board motion. It'll be under $500. But if you're so inclined, I don't have a problem. We're looking at 60 to 190 for the unit. Right now, I'd say 60's looking good. Uh, 90 for the water sensor, and either 55 or 65 for the smoke. And, uh, we have to get some wire to, wire it up.
So, we, the, the last one, the backup, we wouldn't be buying?
Well, one of them has battery backup on the smoke detector.
Yeah, it's just like 10 bucks more.
Yeah.
Will that be the 65 dollars?
The 60, the original 60 is for the unit itself.
Okay, that's for the unit.
Right. And we may be able to get some of the sensors on eBay for less than that.
Okay.
But, uh...
I think it's a good idea.
Oh, true.
The last three prices are brand-new prices. So, we may be able to get something less than that, but that gives you a parameter of what we're talking.
I mean, another feature it's got, you can call into it, too. It answers the phone and tells you, you know, what the temperature is and all the good stuff, too, so it's...
That would be you.
Can you call your cell phone? Yeah.
Call any phone you want.
All right.
Okay. Well, actually, it's just for FYI. We really don't need a motion on this.
Is there any benefits to our insurance for having something like this?
Probably.
Maybe.
I don't believe so.
Well, maybe.
Well, I do.
Might ask.
Right. I mean, if they have a burglar alarm, I know we have that. We'll say bye-bye.
To prevent that kind of insured damage.
Yeah, we could check into it.
We could call.
I could ask them.
You can call George.
Yep.
Can knock off some spots, that's great.
Yeah, okay.
Just think we could buy more limestone.
Okay, minutes reflect that the board is favorable. We're moving ahead on that.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. We have no old business. We're up to payment of the bills.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, what, I have, um, this one question. What's this Jenny Conley building?
That's for our, our building official. He, um, has to belong to the, to get his points. And Jenny, it's Jenny, um, Forest Classics, Jenny Conley Building Official Association.
Okay.
That's what that's for.
What's Tyler Tech? Is that the computer?
Who?
Tyler Tech?
That's my, for my apps.
For the applications?
Uh, all my apps on my computer.
Is that for the apps or for maintenance?
It's for maintenance.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's any more questions, I make the motion to pay the bills.
Support. Will we use Colleen or doesn't it?
Okay, moved and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let a roll call vote.
Okay. Pat? Yes. Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Colleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we're up to citizens comments. Before we open it up, uh, there's a resident here that has concern over an ambulance run to his home. And, uh, he brought this in tonight, which is a board resolution 95-6, which is applicable.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I'm going to turn it over to him, and he can, uh...
He's going to the citizens comments.
Yep. He's on the citizens comments. And, uh, you may have to give him some time to read it when you get to it, but Mr. Rewalt?
Hello, I'm Ron Rewalt. I live at 9667 Division in Casco. And recently, I just got a bill from Casco Township for $50 for a fire rescue run. Now, the day in question, my wife was in arterial fibrillation. I called 911, and this has happened before, and Richmond Lennox EMS comes out, and then she gets taken to the hospital and everything's fine. No fire rescue ever showed up before. This last incident, they did. I didn't call them, and now I get a bill for $50. They came out, and I didn't like the circumstances. They were there probably 10 minutes after EMS was there. Didn't know they were there. My wife's in the EMS unit, ready to be taken to Henry Ford McComb. I'm upstairs packing a bag for her, because I know she's going to spend the night, if not two. And all of a sudden, I hear someone in my house. I figure, huh, why is the EMS driver coming back up? Well, it wasn't them. By the time I got downstairs, I see someone shaking. Uh, the last name of the EMS guy was Stewart. Shaking his hand, and then, I don't know how many were there. Didn't see any vehicles other than Richmond Lennox EMS, because I have a circular drive. And I didn't want them there. I might be in charge $50 for them to be there. So, under resolution 95-6, on page 5, item 69, I want the charges excluded, waived, rescinded, whatever, on the good intent call, which not classified above. Or go to item 70, which is 60, which is a typo. The good intent call insufficient information available to classify further. But I don't, the $50 charge is something that I don't feel it's justified for me to pay, since I didn't want them there. And if this were to happen again, now someone needed the Richmond Fire Department at a different location, but two or three show up elsewhere frivolously, now they're endangering someone else who needs the help.
Sounds like someone messed up at the dispatch center.
Well, yeah, that's what I was told. Yeah, dispatch out of St. Clair County put the call through for fire rescue. Now, if I would've known they were going to do that, if I would've been calm enough, I would've said, "All I need is Richmond Lennox EMS. I don't need anyone else." But in the past, it's never had to happen. Why would it happen now?
You, you explained that your wife was having a condition like you're saying?
Arterial fibrillation. That happens to her... It just happened to her Tuesday. It's passed last week.
Again?
Yes.
Huh.
She's got a couple prosthetic valves.
Okay.
And it's happened in the past where she can do the old mind over matter and control it. Well, this, last Tuesday, she took an extra soda pill and was able to control it, because I said, "Well, I'll call 911." She goes, "No, don't call them, because we're going to have another $50 charge against us again." So now, now we're playing good health against, you know, something...
Okay. Let me, can I... According to our contract with Richmond Lennox, with Richmond, uh, Fire Department, 911's called, their first responders. Um, to cancel this, the fire department has to do it. Did you go talk to them?
I talked to Rob right there.
And what'd he say?
He was just saying that we have an agreement with Casco. That's basically it.
Okay. That he didn't tell you that we can't cancel it, they have to do it?
No, he didn't say that.
Well, they have to cancel that run and say that it was a good intent, and then we can cancel your, your money. They're the ones that have to cancel it. We have no vote over that.
Well, the thing that, you know, led me to believe that you did have control is the check is made payable to Casco.
Well, no, not...
That's what it says here on this bill.
Right. But this just gives...
Do that more easily, so...
All right. That just lets us collect it. It doesn't let us rescind it.
Okay, so I got to talk to Rydell again. See, you didn't explain that.
I wish he would've, because it's up to them. If they'll cancel it and say that it was just a good intent, then I can write it, see?
Okay.
Because we get, I'm sorry that you have to go through. I really am sorry, Mr. Rewalt.
Mr. Rewalt?
Can I finish talking, and then you can talk to him, okay? All right? Because I handled these bills. And I want him to know exactly what he has to do, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. He should explain to you, we have to pay for every run that goes out, okay? If he changes it, then, then we don't get charged for that run, that $820 that we get charged. So, if I don't get charged, then I can, I can cancel you.
All right.
Do you see what I'm saying? But he's the one that has to do it. And I see your point.
See, he, he never explained that to me when I talked to him on the phone.
Well, he should know.
Three weeks ago.
He shouldn't, I, I'm sorry. Maybe I should've talked to you. You know, I was busy the day you were in, and you talked about, which he knew. And I'm sorry that I didn't jump in. So, you know, if we can get, I'll even try to help you. You know, I'll talk to Rydell after you talk to him and see what we can do about it. But if he can mark it, he has to give us one of this, because on your bill, it doesn't say that, right?
No.
No. So, if we can get it changed to one of these, then we can cancel your $50 bill, okay? Does that sound reasonable?
Well, as long as everything gets canceled, but there's still that issue that, you know, if dispatch does this again and someone else...
Okay, I'm going to tell you what you do. When you call dispatch, you tell them, because I've had this problem with other...
Well, now I, right, now I know.
Tell them, "I do not want the fire department. I only need EMS."
Oh, yeah. I wish...
Yeah.
I wish resolution 95 or, or this 26...
Well, you don't know it until you have to use it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and unfortunately, that's the way we've got it set up. You know? Why they got there after EMS, I don't understand.
You make them ready to pull out.
Yeah. And I, unless...
And I don't know if they came in their civilian trucks or if there's a fire rescue from the fire department. I didn't see any vehicles there, except one guy shaking, a guy shaking.
Okay. And that guy, and you don't... Well, whoever wrote up that, your thing on the bottom, there should be a person that wrote it up. That's the person that supposedly was there.
Yeah.
So, here...
Whoever fills out the report is the person that was there.
Should be the person in charge.
Well, it's got Rydell's name, and it's got Steve Aiken.
Okay. Rydell is just the chief.
Right.
So, Aiken should be the one...
A lot of times, he's there on a fire truck, but not on a...
Right. So, tell him to get ahold of Aiken, and you guys have a little sit-down talk, you know?
All right. Yeah, because I wish when I talked to Rob, he would've explained that he can rescind these charges.
It's up to them. I, I have no, you know, that's our contract.
He was just telling me what protocol was, and there's an order, uh...
Yeah, and that's true.
An agreement and a contract. I said, "Oh, okay," but it's...
Yeah, I see what you're...
It's not right.
Well, I was telling Ron that when I called an ambulance for my dad, here comes the fire truck. And I said, "Why?" And he said, "Well, they usually, it was just an ambulance run. They'll send them out, because sometimes the two people on EMS can't get somebody out of a house if they're elderly or heavy, or the door's small. So, they send both." And last spring, they were saying that the dispatcher was getting new criteria in their state guidelines of who to dispatch. Well, you know, they're going to cover themselves. They're going to always send more. But until it, and the fire chief told me, you know, that once the truck leaves the door, that it's a fire run, and it gets billed as such. So, we don't have anything to do with that. And you can tell the dispatcher, "Just bring an ambulance," but...
Well, oh, yeah. And then, "I need to," that will...
Right. I never had it happen again where I had that option, but at the time, I had five people there, and they said that's why they do that. In case they have trouble getting them out of the house. They don't want to, all of a sudden, they have EMS there and say, "We can't get them out," and now call...
It's a Dan if you do and Dan if you don't situation.
Right.
But it's going to bite someone in the butt down the road here. Not just a $50 bite like I'm getting.
Yeah.
But it's gonna, you know, someone's going to go running through Richmond to get to the firehouse, and there's going to be an accident because they're going to go out to a run they didn't have to go on. You know, it's, you know...
Maybe if you could look into the protocol of what's going to be now, maybe we needed to change our contract. I don't know. If, if we can, I don't even know that.
Well, because actually, our contract is due to be renewed.
Okay.
And I asked them about, you know, how they calculate the number of runs, if that was going to change with the new guidelines from the state, and they weren't sure. They said it'd only been in place a couple months, and they hadn't seen much change. Because I said if it's going to create a lot more runs, which is going to raise our fee that much, that we need to maybe put some language in the contract.
Mm-hmm.
And I've not heard back from the city manager yet. So...
Well, the bill was due the November 1st.
Don't worry about it. I've got your name and number. No problem. No problem. That's not a problem. I can hold that off until...
Nah, just get a load of breakouts.
You're still in dispute. And I've done this for many people that try to work it out. Not a problem. You're not going to get another, I'll pull it out.
But at least now, I know.
They're the ones that have to change it.
To tell dispatch?
Right.
What?
Yep. "I do not want the fire department. I want only the ambulance, EMS." Because I have, I went through, through with a good friend of mine. His mom was like your wife, and he had to be taken several times to the hospital. And one time, she forgot to say, "I only need the ambulance," and she got a fire run. She was not happy with me. But I tried to explain to her, like I did you, get them to cancel it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
They never... That was IRA, so... But we'll see. Maybe they will cancel it.
Well, let it, let us know what works out, because, you know, I can give Mr. Moore a call.
Yeah.
If he needs more explanation. He's the city manager.
All right.
He's a good guy. And, uh, but try again, see what happens. Let me know.
Yep, I will.
Because if it's taken off, then it's one less run for us, too, which helps our price. So... But he, I don't know why he didn't explain that to you, that he's the only one that can do that. Make a good intent.
Nah, he, he forgot to offer that information to us.
Yeah, well, he...
Well, the same is true on fire runs, which is $250.
Right.
And people don't get a burning permit, and they're having some kind of bonfire in the middle of the night out in the woods, and somebody from the freeway saw them, called the fire department. So, here comes the fire department. They're on the freeway. They jump over the fence, go out and talk to the guy. He's not hurting anything. Still got a bill for $250, because the truck left the firehouse. There's nothing we can do about it, you know? Permits are free. Get a permit.
Oh, I used to go up to the police department all the time.
You could do it online.
You can do it online. Oh, for the last two years, I've gone online.
In IRA, you can do it by phone.
They would never let you do it by phone. Oh, you said in IRA.
IRA.
Right.
No, but part of our township is an IRA fire department.
Department. I'm glad I remember it.
So... But, you know, people are really mad then, because, you know, they're paying $250.
Yeah.
So... But it was the same thing. If, you know, well, the fire department's not going to cancel it, because they ended the run. So... And I asked Mr. Rewalt tonight if he had tried to turn this $50 into his insurance, and he said he had not, hasn't yet. So, I don't know. That's between you and him.
Yeah, I see what Rydell says, and like I said, well, we already paid for the EMS run. I don't know if it's going to fly if...
Well, it's the total cost of the thing. So, don't know. Okay, well, let us know.
Yep, move and do.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Wayne? What's happening at NEMC? As our representative? Not much?
No, we're not having a meeting this month. We're combining it with December.
Mm-hmm.
As a Susie Homemakers, I'm going to cook their turkeys.
Susie Homemakers? Oh!
I think I'm leaving.
All right. You can go.
Thank you.
Having a good night, Stoller.
Voting is 7/8, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Last thing on the citizen comments. Don't forget. I don't know if this will be on the air by the 7. No?
Nope.
Well, since you're not going to see this before Election Day, I really wish you would've voted if you did.
There you go.
Okay. Anybody else on citizen comments? No, we are up to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn. Either one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand and adjourn.
Ah...